Sharon, could you call the roll please?
Councilmember Derwin. Councilmember Alves. Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warnock.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here. Okay, first up is oral communications. This is the time for any member of the public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. You will have three minutes to speak. If your item is on the agenda, would you kindly wait until that agenda item is called? But any member of the public wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? I see two hands up. The first is Nan Chostak. Go ahead now.
Unmute, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. As you know, I'm a geologist and on the town's geologic safety committee. Last night I attended the meeting of the ad hoc house. A number of you did. I was astonished to see that during the housing planning process, geologic hazards are being quote simplified end quote out of existence. For instance, only the San Andreas Fault was considered a seismic fault hazard. The other potentially active faults running through the town have been eliminated from the map that they're using in planning for future dense housing. For the more liquefaction, that's when the soil turns to jelly and buildings built on it sink during an earthquake. Is one of the seismic hazards recognized by the state of California and the federal government. Liquification was not even mentioned last night. Parcels with soil susceptible to liquefaction enlisted as such on the town's ground movement potential map. Were suggested as prime properties for the densest snow development. Other seismic hazards like slope failure triggered by earthquakes has actually happened here in 1906. This land's earthquake triggered landslides and amplification of ground shaking and deep unconsolidated soils were not considered. These hazards can and should be modeled and mapped. Only the planning commission can recommend to the council changes to the town's geologic and ground movement potential maps. And then only after a publicly noticed meeting. At which evidence for the changes is presented and discussed. This process, even if it's inconvenient, must be adhered to for the public safety. The information on the maps is there for a purpose and it must not be ignored. I'm looking forward to working with the town on the safety element and I hope the geologic safety committee will be included in early discussions with urban planning partners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next hand up is Charles Afroni. Go ahead, Charles.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Charles Afroni. I'm speaking to you as an elected representative of the Westridge Committee with the full support of all current members of our committee. The Westridge Committee represents the interests of over 250 property owners throughout Westridge. Similar topic as Nan's, we understand that the town staff is recommending that the ad hoc housing element committee consider a proposal to rezone certain areas of the town. To allow up to 20 housing units per acre. We understand that the committee will meet next week to act on the town staff recommendation. The Westridge Committee would like to know why this is being considered before we have the information needed to assess the risks of this proposal. Cal Fire is actively working on updating wildfire hazard maps for our town. The Woodside Fire Protection District is actively completing hazard mapping for our town. The wildfire safety committee and an emergency preparedness committee is actively working on assessment of our evacuation capacity for the town. The safety element updates to identify the highest hazard areas of our town as state law requires is still pending. We understand that adequate lot size, adequate building setbacks, maximum building area and adequate separation between buildings are all critically important factors for fire prevention and seismic safety. Why are we rushing to change or eliminate these safeguards in certain areas of the town before the experts have fully weighed in on the hazards of doing so? I've lived in this town just about all of my life. Residents of this town have made central life decisions with an understanding that Portola Valley, as established by its founders, respects open space and cares deeply for the safety of its residents. I do not recognize the values of our long term commitment to thoughtful planning for our community and safety that made Portola Valley. Our choice of town for our families reflected in the actions the town may be poised to take. On behalf of the Westridge Committee and indeed on behalf of many of my fellow residents of Portola Valley. I urge the town to await the findings of the fire safety and evacuation experts before taking such significant actions with potentially devastating and life threatening consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have a presentation later in tonight's meeting about the timeline of the safety element and the housing elements and so on. So there may be some. Elements of that that are responsive to your comment. Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? I see no more hands up. Okay, seeing none then move on. Next up is our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are voted on as one vote by the council unless a member of the requests an item to be removed and considered separately. Before that, though, we do take public comment on any item on the consent agenda. So is there any public comment on an item on the consent agenda? I do not see any. Does a council member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? If not, I will consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Warnock, seconded by Councilmember Richard. Sharon, could you call the roll please?
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Councilmember Warnock.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Okay, that brings us to our regular agenda and the first item, item eight is a report by the planning and building director with a safety element update. Laura. Welcome.
Thank you. Just a moment while I share my screen. Okay, does that look okay for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you. Good evening. Mayor, members of the council, for any members of the public that don't know me, I'm Warren Russell, planning and building director. We're gonna give an update on the safety element process. To follow up on the discussion that started last year and is ongoing as we also work on the closing element. So just briefly, in case anyone is new to this discussion, a safety element is a part of the general plan. You can think of it as a chapter. Of the general plan and this is the goal that comes from the state law. And we're talking about reducing the potential short and long term risks of death, injuries, property damage, economic and social dislocation. Those things resulting from fires, floods, droughts, earthquakes, landslides, climate change and other hazards. And safety elements include goals and policies aimed at reducing those risks. So we do analysis, we bring mapping and data together and then we create policies and programs. And programs have a specific meeting when you're talking about a housing element. And those include the future activities that you might undertake in order to further address this. So elements of a general plan are not necessarily going to include all of the analysis you ever want to do. But they're the starting point and point you into the future for analysis that you might want to undertake in the future. So in terms of our process here, in August of 2021 last year, the council reviewed a proposal. From staff that included a work program and the council also approved a contract with a consultant and that's Urban Planning Partners. That's the same consultant team that's working on the town's housing element. So as a reminder, the safety element and the housing element both have to be updated under state law every eight years on the same cycle. The council decided at that time to start this process before many other communities did. When we started this process, there were some unknowns because we were pretty early in the game. And so one of them was countywide collaboration. So at that time, we expected there to be a collaborative effort. Led by the county that we would be able to participate in. There were delays related to that and kind of it wasn't clear how that was going to go forward. So we decided we needed to make sure we could go ahead and get started. And in fact, that countywide collaboration is only starting now. So they haven't even issued an RFP. And it's not clear if and how that's going to go forward. So it would be well behind our process and I'm not sure what other communities are even doing to bring some of those safety aspects into their housing element process. So I do think that is a good thing that we started when we did well, well, of some other communities. We also didn't know other agencies timelines when we started this in August. So. Hellfire, as many of you know, is updating its fire maps right now. There were other agencies that were working on some mapping and some data. And so we were monitoring some of those either in town staff directly or through our consultants to see what might be available. And we found that many of those things are not actually going to be available in this year in time to bring them into the safety element process. So we've had to find other sources of that information through our consultants and subconsultants. We also weren't sure how some of the new laws and the new guidelines were going to be interpreted at that time. So as we're getting a little further into it. We understand better how to interpret some of those laws and guidelines and how to implement them. So we started early without full information. I think it's turned out to be a good idea, but we've just been learning as we've been going. So I wanted to just give a high level of some of the ongoing work that's been happening. We prioritize the tasks to be first that would inform the housing element update process. And again, if you're new to this discussion, the housing element update process has a very strict timeline that's set by state law. And unfortunately, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, has made that timeline even tighter. By increasing the amount of time that they're allowed to review our housing elements, but not giving us more time to develop them. So it's actually very important that we meet the housing element update schedule. So we had to front load some of these tasks so that we would have the safety element work done to inform that housing element process. So some of the key things that we've been working on related to fire safety. Our subconsultant is Zeke Lender with Deer Creek Resources. He's spoken to two meetings of the ad hoc housing element committee now. And he is working on both our housing element and our safety element. And the high level of the work that he's completed so far includes a two day tour of the community where he's driven essentially every road in town and taken numerous pictures. He's done preliminary mapping to understand areas of the combination of both slopes. And vegetation coverage and given us some feedback and preliminary recommendations on where it would be. More appropriate and less appropriate to consider additional housing development. Zeke has also been in communication with the fire marshal, Don Bullard. They've been having conversations about the additional mapping needs that are necessary. And I've heard from both Zeke and the fire marshal that they agree on what type of mapping would be appropriate for the town in the future. So the fire district will be going out for their proposal process to hire their own qualified consultants to do additional mapping work. We understand the process is getting going quickly and hopefully there'll be some product from that in the summertime. So Zeke may actually propose on that or may not, we're not sure. But in the meantime, he's under contract with us, the town, in order to continue to provide preliminary recommendations for the safety element process. Next is related to evacuation safety. So there's two coordinated studies that are underway right now. One of them, the council should be quite familiar with. It's a evacuation study that's being led by Farron Peers, which is a premier. Transportation consultant firm. And Jeremy has brought that forward and has been bringing that through the process for community involvement. Farron Peers is also a subconsultant for the housing element and safety element. And then we also have Atlas Planning, which is a subconsultant working on this. And they're working on a specific type of evacuation planning that's required under state law for safety elements. And in particular, they have analyzed for us what areas of town have only one point of ingress and egress. So all of the parcels that only have one way in or out. And so they've mapped that. And then there's also going to be a memo and report that comes with that. To combine that with the other hazards that may be present in the community to try to assess generally where do the hazards lie for evacuation safety. So the ad hoc housing element committee had the benefit of those evacuation maps from Atlas Planning at their meeting last night for their consideration. So that's worked out and then those two studies will continue to be coordinated and as those additional studies and memos are completed. Then they'll be released out to the public for public comment so that we can weave back into the rest of the process. Then in related relation to geologic safety, as everyone knows, we have really excellent mapping from many years. Of studying the faults and the. The stability of the soils in the community. So Cotton Shires has acted as the town's. Town geologist for many years. Our current town geologist has been working with staff and has coordinated with urban planning partners and supplied those maps. Over to them and the town geologist will continue to be involved with the consultant team as we move forward. So next turning to community participation and engagement. So as we outlined it, the three committees have really a primary role in providing committee input on this process. Since we have these standing committees, we did not form a special. Ad hoc committee for this process. We wanted to draw from the experience and knowledge of our existing committees. And I see here the wildfire preparedness committee is no longer ad hoc. That's permanent committee now. You've taken that action. But the wildfire preparedness committee, the emergency preparedness committee and geologic safety committee will all have a primary role. And we anticipate them doing two rounds of review for this process. The first is to review some of the analysis and the materials that we gathered and we anticipate that happening in April. And then we anticipate bringing a draft of the safety element to them in late May or early June. We also think that there is some role for the sustainability committee due to some of the climate and drought aspects of this. So we're still thinking through a little bit what their role is going to be. They'll have, we think probably one round of review for this, but we're working through some of those details. Continuing on community engagement, we anticipate having a community wide outreach meeting. The format of that, we're not sure. It could be a large meeting in person. It could be an open house style. So we're thinking about the ways that we can get the most feedback from the community. On some of these topics, we anticipate that happening in April or May of this year. And then of course, any update to the general plan has to go through the planning commission. So there'll be planning commission public hearings. Well, they'll receive all of that information and bring it all together. So the planning commission has an important role in this process as they often do of hearing the different priorities of the different parties. And thinking about them from a policy perspective and trying to balance priorities. And then they'll make a recommendation up to the town council. Who has an ultimate role in thinking through the policy language, decision making and balancing those priorities. Further on communications, there is a website that is now live. This is the friendly URL for it. So you can go to portola valley.net slash safety element. It's also linked to different parts of the planning and building page, but this is probably the easiest way to get there and what we'll be using to help direct people to it as we're putting out communications. On this page right now, there is a form to submit comments. And that form is similar to the one that the council has been using recently. We've been kind of testing it out. And so people can put in their names and email addresses and the email addresses would remain private. So they would not go out to the public, but their comments would be available and that creates an easy way for us to track all of the comments. So everyone knows that those comments have been gathered in one place and will be available in the public record. There's also a link there to sign up for an eNotice. And I really encourage any members of the public to sign up for our eNotice system. This is really the best way to stay up to date with these individual initiatives if you're interested. So you can choose the different selections on the eNotice page to see what you want to be updated on. And there's a special one for safety element. If you scroll down towards the bottom. Just for context, our housing element update, eNotice has hundreds of people, over 400 people have signed up for those updates. So we'll see how the safety element does. Hopefully we get to a few hundred there as well. There's going to be more information coming on that webpage as we develop more of the specifics for this. The timeline of the safety element is similar to the housing element. In that we need to do a majority of the work kind of in the first part to the middle part of this calendar year. And then there's a review that's required by Cal Fire. And so Woodside Fire Protection District also has to review, but we of course don't expect that to take as long as the Cal Fire review. So there's kind of a chunk of time that's missing out of the middle of the year in the summer and into the fall. As we work through the Cal Fire review process, kind of a similar timeline as we're thinking about the housing element will be in for review with housing and community development. So the housing element will be just a little bit first and then the safety element will be following. So we're really working to balance the needs of those two major initiatives and stay on the critical path of both. So that we're finishing both in a timely fashion towards the end of year. We're of course going to be posting things on the town news and social media as well. So talking a little bit about the budget now, as I mentioned, we started the process before all of the information was available. From all of the other agencies because of the high importance and because of the need to get the housing element going and to inform that process. So we do think that there was maybe a potentially higher cost, but by customizing the process to the town's needs. It's been much more timely and been much more specific. So I do think that if there's a countywide effort to work together on safety elements, if that even materializes, I think it would not be nearly specific. Specific enough to meet our community's needs. So I think that that really would not have been sufficient, given that, you know, multiple priorities that we have around safety in the community. So we've been working with our consultants, working with outside agencies, booking the timelines, and now those resources have become much more clear. Since we started in August of 2021. So at this time, we are proposing budget increases for a couple of key items. And this is just the overview and what we're thinking is we would like to get staff would like to get feedback from the council on this process. Kind of how it's going and what you think about these budget increases in our approach to them. And then we would come back for a formal contract amendment to actually approve those changes. So in terms of the budget increases, we have a key staff member and we're preparing for that staff member to go out on leave. For approximately six months during this year. So we're preparing for that. So what we're proposing is to increase the time for our subconsultant Atlas Planning. This is their specialty is doing this type of work. We do think that they're qualified and they're well coordinated with urban planning partners. So by them doing a little bit of additional work, that provides flexibility for our team at Urban Planning Partners. To take up some of the work that our internal staff would have been doing. So there is an increase in the Atlas Planning time and coordination and meeting participation in order to do that. We also, now that we kind of see how things are going, we think that for the public meetings, we're going to want additional expert consultant participation. More attendance at some of those meetings and more time to prepare for them. This is really a very complex undertaking. The more, the further we get into it, the more we realize how complex it is. And how complex the coordination with the housing element is. So we do think additional consultant time is necessary for that. And then again, as we've gained more information, we realized that the consultation with Cal Fire takes quite a bit of time and resources in order to do that. So there's also proposed money in a budget increase to actually have our consultants work with Cal Fire on our behalf. So we would have kind of experts speaking to experts to make sure that our safety element can be approved by Cal Fire. So the combination of those increases is approximately $35,000. Staff is still working with the consultant on kind of the exact numbers and. And how that plays out. But we would, like I said, return with a formal contract, but we wanted to let you know where we're at in the process and get any feedback. If you wanted to adjust any of this work program or approach that we're taking. So just in conclusion, if you have any additional direction or feedback on this approach and any feedback on the potential increase to the budget. That's what we'd be very happy to hear from you this evening. I'm also happy to try to answer any questions that you may have. On the big picture or how this interacts with the rest of our work. I don't have the consultant team with me tonight, so I can't necessarily answer very detailed questions. But if there's any very detailed questions, I'd be very happy to get answers and share those later. So that concludes staff's presentation and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Laura. John or Sarah, any questions? John.
Yeah, just one very simple one. Could you remind us all what the state deadline is for the middle HCD?
So you would think it would be a very simple answer.
No, not necessarily.
But it's a little bit complicated and staff will be bringing more information back to the council as an update item. Because HCD has increased their time to review. And so realistically, as we are working with the consultant team and all of the other cities and towns are working this through. We will likely have to go into what people refer to as the grace period. And in early. Of 2023. So we don't know if we're going to be able to complete the HCD review because they're taking so long. So that the town can approve this this year in 2022. So in theory, both the housing element and the safety element would be approved in December of 2022 or maybe January of 2023. But it might be a little bit later than that. And so we're working that through with the consultants and the attorneys and trying to think through the implications of everything.
Thank you.
And I guess just to follow up and clarify, you know, given the commentary earlier in the oral communications portion. These are state mandated timelines that we're working towards and have no control over, just for clarity. Right?
Yes, there are state mandated timelines and there are significant consequences for not meeting them. Our town attorney has put out quite a bit of information on the consequences of not meeting those timelines. So that information is included in some of the earlier meetings in the ad hoc housing element committee. And we'll continue to put that information out so the community can be familiar with it. But the consequences are significant for a community like ours and the way that we do discretionary review and the way that we process projects. There's really significant penalties that can be imposed on communities that don't comply.
And then can you clarify, you know, I, my understanding is the evacuation study is about, correct me if I'm wrong, about halfway done. And so that is going to dovetail right into the safety element in kind of a timely fashion. Is that, is that correct? I haven't been as close to that project in the last couple of weeks, but.
So there's two evacuation studies that I mentioned. The one is smaller and that's the one that we already brought into the housing element process. And those maps for the one point of ingress and egress. And I would actually go over to Jeremy to provide an update on the timing of the other evacuation.
That was the one I was talking about, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Hughes, members of the council through the chair. The evacuation study that the council approved last year is been underway for about four months. And we're expecting a product from the consultant. I would say mid spring. My hope is April timeframe, but it may be a little later. They, a consultant has been working to gather a whole suite of data sets in order to. Run the scenarios that have been decided upon and they've essentially concluded that work, the data collection that is. So I would expect them to start running the scenarios and having information for staff in the. Just subcommittee of the wildfire preparedness committee that is also involved in reviewing that draft when it comes out.
Thank you. So that will be within the timeline of the safety element as Laura described, just for clarity there. And then Laura, could you also for, you know, I think I'm the, I'm getting all my meetings mixed up, but I think it was last night on the housing element committee. Meeting when you clarified how the Woodside Fire Protection District mapping. meeting when you clarified how the Woodside Fire Protection District mapping project will dovetail with this. If you could just share that for the community that's on the Zoom tonight.
Okay, so our understanding is that the Woodside Fire Protection District is going to be doing extensive mapping that be similar, we can think of it as to what CalFire does in terms of designating very high fire severity zones as well as a comprehensive hazard and risk assessment. So they're undertaking that work. Then we understand they'll have initial product from that they are hoping in the summertime. And so we recognize that that's important information. And so when that information becomes available, we'll reflect on whatever point we're at in the housing element and the safety element. And we'll integrate those materials to the degree that we can, whatever point we are at. And then if we have to pivot and make adjustments based on that new information, we would do so. And so it could result ultimately, depending on the timing of revisions of our safety element or even housing element. And so we could have to turn around and make revisions again, or it could come kind of at a perfect time when we're in the middle of the analysis and environmental review and we're able to kind of slot it right in. So we're going to remain flexible and know that we're going to have to bring that information in. And it could require, you know, consideration by the full council even, depending on where we're at and what direction we need to go. So we're going to be continuing to collaborate with the fire district so that we can understand their timing and kind of anticipate when that would be coming. So that we can figure out how to integrate those pieces together in the best possible way. But we do have to, this is an important question, right? Everyone is wondering and we're all asking ourselves, is there any way to wait for that information to come out? And unfortunately, the answer is just no, we can't wait. If we don't continue on, on our path for the housing element and the safety element, it will not be possible to complete both of those documents and the environmental review that's required under the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA in order to complete those things by the timeline. So we are forced to continue to march forward, knowing we may have to course correct. So we'll be working hard to figure out the best way to do that if it's necessary. But I would say that the analysis we've done so far, particularly related to fire safety, we do think is sufficient in order for the housing element committee to continue the work that's in front of it right now. And it's certainly sufficient for our safety element group, our team there, to be moving forward. So we do think we have the right pieces at the right time to continue on our path.
Thank you. And then my last question has relates to one of the slides you had up where you were outlining the process of the safety element. And there were two review points for the three committees that are acting as like a, and the equivalent of the ad hoc housing. One was, I think you said, review analysis. There were two bullets there. One was review analysis and the other was review recommendations, maybe?
It would probably be, we think it'll be to review the draft housing element. So we want them to, I'm sorry, the draft safety element. We want them to review early in the process, so it'll probably be in the form of, a lot of times consultants present memos with their initial analysis, any preliminary recommendations or preliminary conclusions. So we'll group together those materials and that will be the early analysis that will have those three committees to consider. So we get that local feedback and expertise. And then the consultants will draft the safety element and then the committees will see the full draft of the safety element. I do think it's worth noting for people that are not familiar with safety elements, a lot of it is very prescribed by the state has guidelines for how safety elements are completed. And then there's also guidelines that are specific for communities that have higher fire hazard. So we, we have to follow those things. There's not as much room for different policy and interpretation in our opinion as there is for a housing element. It's a little bit more according to a formula. So that's why we think those two points will be the appropriate time to get the feedback from the community because we need the early feedback and then we'll follow the formula and then we'll check in with the committees and see how we did in terms of capturing that local knowledge.
Okay. And then, you know, we were talking about this at, on a meeting this morning, as far as additional work by those three committees, my understanding is, well, what is, you know, and there'll be these community meetings, but then at the separate committee level meetings, the committees are going to have a role somehow within their normal committee meeting times, I guess. Is that true?
Yes. So we'll have to see how the chairs of each of the committees want to handle it. So they maybe will just handle it at their normal scheduled meeting time, but some of them already have pretty full agendas. So they may wish to schedule a special meeting either for this topic or for their other regular topics so that we can cover everything that we want to cover with them. So it would be staff working with the chair of each of those three committees, talking to them about how the meeting would be structured and it would be quite structured. So it would include, for example, presentation by staff and consultants. There'd be packet materials that they would could review in advance. They could ask questions, provide comments. So it would be quite structured for them for the committee meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Laura, I had just a couple of questions about the budget amendment. That would be for the work through June or is that thirty-five thousand covering kind of what you expect the additional cost will be for the whole rest of the process, which would continue into next year? Or will that be part of next year's budget?
That's what we expect for the increase for the whole process. So some of it, we have to think about where it falls in terms of the budget years. So I think some of it probably would be this budget year because we're preparing for the leave of the staff member, which crosses over between the two budget years. So I have to think about the exact detail of that. So some in this budget year and some in next budget year most likely.
Okay. And then the other question with that is just around the flexibility and the, you know, anticipating that we may need to, you know, redo things once the Woodside Fire draft maps come out at some point, you know, summer-ish. Is that that kind of extra work that may arise from that? You know, your best guess at what that extra work might be included in that or might we need to adjust again at that point?
I think unless it was perfect timing, this would not cover those costs.
Okay, so, so next year, because it's probably going to happen after July first that we get those maps from Woodside Fire at some point early next fiscal year, we may need to say, oh, now that we've got the Woodside Fire maps and we know what extra work we need to do to revise things, or maybe a little bit more yet still.
Yes, my best recommendation at this time would be for us to work with the fire marshal, really monitor that process, see how it's going and then probably schedule an item before the council to tell you where we're at in the housing element and the safety element, what impact we think the fire district's process has on that. And then present options of ways we think we could go forward. And then we would look at the budget implications of those options.
Okay. And are we, I, I don't know how much excess capacity the consultants that we're working with have, are we going to be facing some situation like with, you know, getting a tax accountant just before April fifteenth where they've allocated everybody because everybody in the state is trying to get their safety and housing elements finalized and they just don't have capacity? Or do they have enough extra room that they could squeeze in more work for us if we needed it?
Capacity could definitely be an issue. We, I think, are fortunate to even get additional capacity from these consultants to cover the leave of our staff member. So that will be one of the things that staff will have to evaluate and bring back to you in that kind of recommended approach that I just outlined. We will though be working with our consultants all the time throughout this, right? Every Thursday morning, we update them on what's going on. So that way we'll at least have a good idea of how things are going. And if we anticipate needing their time, you know, to get on their calendars and at least try to get priority over other folks they're not already working with.
Yeah, and there should be no surprise. It sounds like a good plan. Okay, thanks. That was it for my question. So now we will go to public comment if any member of the public has a comment on this item. And I see a couple of hands up already. First is Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. There's been a lot of participation of the residents in this town and different committees and commissions, meetings and letters that have been sent to the town about the safety element over the past couple of years. I hope that these voices will be incorporated in the reports of the consultants. Are these comments and letters being collated somewhere to ensure that they're included? I, I hope to get an answer for this one. And if you can't answer me now, if you could possibly send me an email for that question, I appreciate it. But I, I think it's important that people have taken time out of their evenings and out of their lives to write about these particular issues that, you know, concern our, our personal safety and the safety of our, our neighbors and our beautiful town. And it would be such a waste if, if these voices are, are not included in the outcome. But I'd like to know if they're, if they are being collated because it shouldn't be just the voices and the, you know, education of the consultants answering for our needs to keep us and our, our families safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next is Rusty, Rusty Day. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I have three questions. The development of the amendment or the revised safety element is going to include elucidation or definition of our safety goals, our safety policies, safety objectives. And as those are developed, I'm wondering, my first question is who's developing that? And what role are the three committees going to play in delineating and defining what our goals, policies and objectives are? My second question is, under the government code, in addition to elaborating goals, policies, objectives and programs, the government code also calls upon the town to set, to establish a set of feasible implementation measures for the town that include all the following. Avoiding or minimizing wildfire hazards associated with new uses of land. Locating when feasible new essential public facilities outside of high fire risk areas, including but not limited to hospitals, healthcare facilities, emergency shelters, emergency command centers, emergency communications facilities, and identifying construction methods or other methods to minimize damage if they're located in high fire hazard severity areas. And then designing an adequate infrastructure for any new development. It's located in a very high fire hazard severity area, including safe access and egress for emergency response vehicles, signage, water supplies, et cetera. My question is, who's developing those implementation measures for the safety element? And what role will the committees play in reviewing, assessing and defining those before the safety element is drafted? My last question is, what's the target deadline for submitting the safety element, the proposed draft safety element to CalFire in Woodside Fire Protection District so that they can review it in time for the town to approve this by the end of the year? Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Next hand up is Valerie Baldwin. Go ahead, Valerie.
Sorry, I have to unmute. Yeah, I was at the housing element meeting last night listening and have a couple of comments about what I heard last night. It seems like the, all this housing element is coalescing around using the NAFRS triangle area. And I was concerned about if they are considering the impact on the, on the neighboring homes if this gets approved and passed. I'm on Echo Lane right behind Ron Remy's garage and a four-story apartment building looming over the back of my yard and by my house would be a major impact on our living there. So I'm really concerned about that. That nobody seems to be considering the impact on the neighbors. And my other comment is on the mapping. I'm really concerned that the maps that they had last night showing where the housing elements were going to be recommended did not have all of the information on the maps. I don't, I, Laura Russell didn't say if they were going to continue to flesh out those maps, but there's a map from Cotton Associates, our town geologist, showing a major ground eruption right at the corner of Alpine and Portola Road during the nineteen oh six quake. She was mentioning, well, they didn't put little faults on the maps because they weren't active. Well, that sounds pretty active to me. And I'm, I'm really worried that, you know, they're ignoring a lot of things so that they can, you know, put everything in the NAFRS triangle and not try to put these housing rezoning in other areas of the town. Also, I had mentioned that there was a, there's a major underground river that goes under our house, which normally follows fault lines. And when we moved in in nineteen eighty-two, our home was flooded. And the underground water system still is operating today because we have a lot of plants in the yard that we don't water and they do just fine, not native plants. And so I know that there is a major underground water river there under our house and that's not on the map. So I was wondering if they were having more planning meetings to flesh these maps out a little bit better. So we had a better understanding of what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Next hand is Nan Chastak. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I had to unmute. Hi, yeah, thanks for listening to me again. I have a very specific question having to do with probably the safety element. And it is, how are we planning for an earthquake followed by wildfire, fire that perhaps starts in town? And we don't have hours of, of hours of notice for a proper evacuation. What are we going to do? So is that one of the scenarios that's being considered by the consultant? And if it isn't, we need to, we really need to get it in there. So, so is, does anyone know whether it is? I mean, can you answer me?
We, we take public comment and then staff will have an opportunity to answer anything they can answer now at the end of that. And then anything else, they'll, they'll get back to you if they need to follow up separately with information they don't have available tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. And then the other thing is Valerie Baldwin mentioned the, it's actually a thrust fault at the corner of Alpine and Portola, right in front of the Cafe Deli and Ron Remy's garage, maybe extending over to in front of the fire department, which concerns me. But that was a rupture in nineteen oh six and you know, that wasn't considered in last night's Housing Element Committee. It's one of those faults that just weren't sort of brushed aside as not being important, but the faults really, really are important. They are there, they're on the map for a reason. And just because they're inconvenient for the housing element, the housing process, you know, the, the, the Rena numbers doesn't mean that we should ignore them. They are there, they're in the ground. And they do present a potential hazard. They have to be considered. So thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next hand is Christie Corley. Go ahead, Christie.
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering Zeke's role in what he's doing. I understand he drove many of our streets for two days hired, but I'm wondering how many extra hours per week he's putting into our, the job he's doing for Portola Valley? If you could be more descriptive on that, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. I see no more hands raised, so. I see no more hands raised, so I will, oh, there's one just went up. Eight, five, one, seven, eight, seven.
Hi, it's Maida Jones again with the computer that doesn't know my name. I, my comment is is actually very small. Laura, it's about slides you showed and the committee, this was about the safety element. The committee was going to consult with a number of consultants, and then the last one was consult with CAL FIRE, presumably about fire risk and hazard. And I would like to see Woodside Fire Protection District mentioned there right alongside CAL FIRE. I wouldn't understand why it wouldn't be both of them. Because actually CAL FIRE's report, as I understand it, it's going to be six months or five months later than the projected due date of July 26 for the Woodside Fire District report. So I'd like to see the Fire District specifically mentioned on that slide. Thanks.
I know. Okay, now I see no more hands up, so I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for any further discussion. Actually, before we do that, Laura, I don't know if you, I saw you were noting down all the questions as they came. If you have any you'd like to answer tonight, or if you'd prefer to follow up offline.
Um, I can answer a few. I'd be happy to. Rita was talking about comments that have been collected in the past. And we certainly have been keeping track of many of the comments, but one of the challenges is that a lot of the communication we've gotten in the past has been about varied topics and encouraging the town to undertake the safety element process, which we are. So we're going to do our best to to gather those comments and try to understand which ones are comments that we want to use to inform this process. But we certainly encourage residents, if they want to make sure that those comments are integrated, then like if you don't want to just leave it, do you know what I mean? There's that form that I talked about on the Safety Element website, and you can attach documents there. So it's not a lot of work. It's really easy. So you can just send those back to us if you want to be sure. And so that's one approach that you can possibly take as we're going through old correspondence. And there was questions about the goals and the policies and how those would be developed. So the goals and policies would be developed by our expert consultant team. They would be reviewed by the town's committees. So that's where we, you know, look at them with the committees and see if those feel like the appropriate goals and policies and objectives. And then, of course, the Planning Commission has an important role in that as well. Who's developing the specific measures that are required by the state law? Again, that's our consultant team developing the specific measures. Our consultant team has extensive experience working with communities that have increased fire danger. So we do think we have the right folks on board to be working on that. And the committees again would be reviewing that language and again, planning commission and council. In terms of the target deadline to submit for review to CAL FIRE and Woodside FIRE, we're still working on the exact scheduling of that, but we expect it to be in the summer or into the very early fall, kind of that time period for their review. There was questions and comments related to geologic mapping. So thank you for those questions and and kind of notations for us. We'll review with our geologists, the town geologists, as well as our experts to make sure that we've captured everything. In terms of there's a question about what about an earthquake followed by a wildfire? And so that those types of scenarios are not necessarily considered in that level of detail with the safety element. But if we identified those things as further study that would be needed, that could potentially be a program of the safety element that we would come back and do additional analysis in the future. There is a question about Zeke's role and the extra hours. Right now, as part of that $35,000 that staff is is proposing for consideration, that includes 18 additional hours from Zeke Lender beyond the scope that we already have with him to do additional work. And then there was a question or comment in my slides about review by CAL FIRE. And then I didn't mention Woodside FIRE, and that was just because that slide was about increased budget numbers. And so we increase, we think there'll be increased cost to coordinate with CAL FIRE, but there's not a cost associated with coordinating with Woodside Fire Protection District. So both agencies would be reviewing the document at the same time, but it doesn't cost us a big amount of money to coordinate with Woodside FIRE. So that's the only reason it wasn't on that slide. So I think that that covers the questions that we can answer right now.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Okay, so bringing back to council, this was really, I think, just accepting the report. But if you have any further questions or comments or thoughts or input, now would be the time. John?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in here that again, Laura, thank you again for another excellent presentation. I thought it was very, very concise and clear. And I don't really have any any major questions. I think you're doing a fabulous job of threading this sort of moving needle target. That's kind of a way. Anyway. Yeah, I I think it sounds like we've got it very well set up for success. So I'm happy with moving ahead and the additional expense seems very reasonable to me.
Sarah?
I also am supportive of the plan that you've laid out. I don't have any questions. We've talked about this quite a bit throughout the last several months on the Housing Element Committee meeting, meetings, and I also am comfortable with the budget increase. So thank you very much for the report.
Yeah, I'm, I want to thank you too, Laura. I mean, we've just all, probably many of us have been watching these crazy Olympic events with people doing backflips and things with giant weights on their feet while, you know, they're in a blizzard. And that is a lot like what I feel like your job probably feels like pretty much every day. So congratulations on being able to get to sleep at night and make clear presentations like you do every time you're you're with us. So thank you, Laura. I am also supportive of the the budget amendment. I mean, we we have to do the work to produce a as good of a safety element as we can. And if that's going to cost us a little bit more, we'll we'll figure out how to do that, I'm sure. So I'm supportive of that. Thank you very much. I think that's all we have for this item.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay, and that brings us to item nine, oral report by our finance director, Cindy. So there you are, Cindy is there. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm just going to share my screen for a moment. Okay, I hope you can all see that.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, council members of the public. My name is Cindy Rhodes, Finance Director with the town. I'm here tonight to present a short slide deck of the town's finance department, its role and responsibilities, recent changes we have experienced, and the future outlook of the department. I'll also open it up at the end for any questions or comments. I'm also joined tonight with our newest addition to the department, Nicole Tenori. You may see her as one of the panelists. She's a finance analyst who joined, who joined and came on board in April 2021. We, me specifically, am very happy to have her on the team. The finance department is staffed with two FTEs with an additional support from our fiscal consultant, Jim Sacco. He works on specific projects such as the annual budget, September revision, and the audit. The finance department is responsible for preserving, enhancing, and supporting the town's finances by creating an annual budget for the town council adoption, monitoring the town's fiscal health, supporting department needs, and providing accounting, human resources, and auditing services that ensure the town's limited funds are expended in a transparent and accountable fashion. The town's finance department's goal is to assist in fulfilling the town's, the council's budgetary priorities and maintain the town's fiscal health. I have here a list of duties under the finance department. Some of these bulleted items I touched on previously, such as the audit and budget preparation. But aside from the finance duties, the department is also responsible for human resources, human resource functions such as payroll benefits, workers' compensation, risk management. These two, human resources and risk management are typically separate departments in both the public and private sector. Here's a deeper dive in this chart on some of the regular reports and processes listed annually, biannually, quarterly, and monthly. Some of these functions, you will notice, have an asterisk to identify either a new process or a component or requirement to the existing task, such as our audits. Along with the townwide audit and preparation of the town's basic financial statements, we also have an annual audit report for the Hassel-Platner Foundation, which reports on the town's recreation class and facility rental programs held in the community hall building. We also have our annual street report due to the State Controller's Office. This reports on state funds received for road-related expenditures, originally including a gas tax, also known as highway users' tax, funds, measures A and M. And this report now also includes new road-related restricted funds, such as measure W, road maintenance and rehabilitation, also known as RMR funds. Um, another one of our annual items is the budget preparation. This is, this was a process that we would do one time a year. We now have included a September revision, which allows us to provide updated information in the revision that may not have been available at the time when the budget is adopted in June. Over in the quarterly section, we have in the interest processing. So we have new investments. Previously, we only had LEAF that we would process on a quarterly basis. We now include our Schwab investments as well. Also, on a quarterly basis, we prepare a budget update using our Stories platform, which has also been new, newly added. Many of the recent changes, and I've listed them here, are include some software implementation, most notably the implementation of a new finance system, which was a great, it's a huge learning experience for me with a whole set of challenges, aside from kicking off the project just a few weeks before the pandemic hit. Under some of these changes, we also have new funds with specific guidelines, reporting requirements and compliance. So it's a whole set of requirements necessary. And then on this next slide here, the future of the finance department, what we're looking as the outlook ahead is looking at evaluating current staffing and resources. With so many of the new systems that we've implemented, we've become aware of an increase in administrative work, scanning, new records management procedures. A lot of capabilities, we now have to have digital records available. One of the other items that has been increasingly a large task to maintain is the bi-monthly warrant list. We're looking into making this tedious bi-monthly process a little more efficient and looking into making it an easier process internally for staff within the different departments, as well as within the finance department. Another item that we'd like to focus on in the future is strengthening the department responsibilities related to human resources, risk management, and also the finance policies and procedures. With all of the new systems that we've implemented, primarily the new finance system, it comes with a whole new set of updating our policies, updating our procedures. So looking into really restructuring that and having all of these items up to date. And with that, I would like to close and then open it up for any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we move to questions and comments, I just want to, would you stop sharing the screen there?
Yes.
First of all, I want everybody to be able to see Nicole. Because we were doing our PowerPoint there. Hi, Nicole. I I hope you guys are as proud of the finance team as I am. And I think it's worth reminding folks, you know, Cindy's trajectory with with our organization. Cindy started at the front desk working on admin functions, answering phones, went back to school, got her degree in accounting, moved into the finance department right around the time I started, and has been the town's acting or permanent finance director for a few years now. That's a wonderful thing to be able to do in 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 our town. And I'm really delighted with all the work that Cindy's been doing. And I hope her presentation provided some additional insight into how much they do and how much we've changed. Some of the dates look like right around the time I joined the organization. So I will take blame for some of the things that Cindy had to do on behalf of the council. And just delighted to take any questions and comments that you might have about where we're going with the finance team. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. John or Sarah, do you have any questions? I would say specifically about the presentation. We can do maybe a broader discussion after, but any questions about the presentation?
I don't have anything about the presentation.
Okay, John. Okay, I will go to public comment then. If any member of the public would like to comment on this item, I see Rita's hand up. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. Where can I find a copy of the last audit? And I noticed that the finance committee has not met since October 2021. And their minutes are not listed on the town website since May 2021, and it's spotty all along the way. Is that going to be happening soon? And I, you know, I'm looking right now in open.gov and I I don't see the the last audit. Perhaps I can not looking in the right place, but thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next hand I see is Carolyn Protongan. Go ahead, Carolyn.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So as a taxpayer and as a community member, I think I'm a little disappointed in when Open Gov was presented. I don't have the actual numbers now, but we were told that this was going to save staff. This was going to be transparent. This was going to be the great idea, and none of our questions can be answered. If you, for instance, want a list of all the government agencies that we're funding, which with a simple of all the government agencies that we're funding, which with a simple quick book account you could do, but unfortunately with this new Open Gov system, it's not available. So it's, it's, it's very disappointing. And I hope that you will answer Rita two years. There's many new funds, like we use COVID fund now to do a study for the communication or for the cable infrastructure in our town. And it's, it's not what we're used to, and I hope you will clarify all our questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further hands from the public. Oops, sorry, I just hit the mute button. The questions, I think both sounded like they may be best answered by, with emails, by sending people links to where they might find the materials they're asking. But I don't know if you have any other comments or response that you wanted to make now.
I'm happy to briefly to the first set of comments. I did send a link to Rita for the audit. And the meeting minutes are developed by the committees themselves. So the most recent meeting won't have meeting minutes associated with it because they're approved at the next meeting. And unfortunately, the past, some committees have struggled with preparing minutes. So that is why there might be some holes there. The committee is expected to meet later this year on the items it normally works on. It is, it, it's a committee that doesn't necessarily have set times, it sort of has set seasons, if you will, depending on the product. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I see actually one more hand up from Christie Corley, which we can go ahead and take. Christie, go ahead.
Just a question, I do remember there were going to be quarterly meetings, is that, or reports financially? Are we still aiming for that and is that what this is? And you said you answered Rita directly, but maybe some of the other residents want to hear the answer on the audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to answer that?
If you would like to, go ahead.
Sure. For those who are interested in seeing the town's budgets and audit, go to portola valley.net slash town. What is that? Town government slash town finance, you could go to the department page and go to town finance, they're all listed there. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, with no more public comment, then I will bring it back to the council. Sarah, it sounded like you had something.
You know, it, it was more of a general comment, Cindy, now, you know, I don't know how many months into the full implementation of Open Gov, I'm, I'm curious how, how you're finding it on a, on a day-to-day basis. I know, you know, initially you were pretty excited about all of the excited and overwhelmed, I guess, about all of the new functionality. Now that kind of you have several months and a couple quarters under your belt. I'm just curious about your, your general thoughts about how it's going.
It's going very well. There's still a learning curve. There's a few items just recently, which it was the first time processing our 1099s using the new system. So we're still continuing on with a, a learning curve. And like I mentioned before, Nicole has joined us since April of 2021. So we've gone through a lot of training, continued development also. So we're reaching out to Open Gov on a continuous basis and letting them know of, you know, some feedback, providing them some feedback and, and letting them know where, you know, we can continue to tweak some items within the system. But it's, it's overall going very well. So we, we're really looking at, you know, strengthening our, our functionality within, within the system. Continue training and then having those resources available. So updating our, our procedures, our finance procedures in getting those caught up and up to date.
Sounds good.
Sarah, I can add to that if it's okay. You know, one challenge with sort of modern relationships with the types of firms that we work with is turnover, to be candid. Open Gov, like a lot of firms, like it just sees a lot of turnover. So we've had a, a number of, I forget the term of art that they use, Cindy, but success managers. Yeah, sort of cycled through, I actually met with the new one today. The other area that's, has some relationship to finance, but also is expanded well outside of finances, there's a customer service portal that we use extensively internally to work out a variety of issues, whether it's related to vacations, sick time, things of that nature. We also use it for a business license program. We're looking to expand it even more. It's, it's actually a pretty, pretty great system. So at some point in the future, if we do an admin update like this one, we can talk about how we use the system there.
Thank you. Other than that, I just wanted to say thank you, Nicole, for being here tonight and it's, it's nice to meet you.
You know, it's nice to meet you all. For the first time, just want to formally introduce myself if you guys don't know me.
Likewise.
As Sarah was saying, she's been exclusively Zoom-based council member for her entire period. So looking forward to someday, hopefully, and I can see people in person. John, did you have any thoughts or comments?
Just thank you to Cindy and Nicole for the great presentation. It's, it strikes me how much it points out the increased complexity of our town and demands on our, on our staff. And both from, I guess, state laws and from our very involved citizenry. So thank you both. It's, it's looking good, but it's definitely a big change over the last 13 years or so that I've been looking at these figures. Keep it up. Thank you.
Yes, it's, there, there've been a lot of changes and Cindy, you've come in for, you know, the last couple of years and been involved in, in a lot of the biggest of those changes. And thank you for, you know, there've been some hiccups, but overall I think it's been a pretty smooth and successful process. And I'm looking forward to, you know, the changes that are yet to come. I think we've got some challenges ahead, you know, in the coming cycle, as we all know, we have to do a lot more housing construction, states requiring us to, and that means we're going to probably have to add staff to be able to support dealing with plan reviews and building inspections and all the rest of it. So there can be some, some amount of scaling of the organization's needs, I think, in the coming years. And figuring out how to handle that. It's gonna be the next challenge probably. And also electronic check signing as a mayor, I'm very excited, looking forward to that, where I don't need to quickly go and sign a pile of checks every week. That will be, that'll be exciting. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, let's see, that brings us to the most exciting item on tonight's agenda, which is a memo from me. So this was on our agenda last week. I apologize, I wasn't able to meet it. Got to be there and present it last week. I felt ill in the second half of the day, we had to be there. So carried this over to this week. I, you know, we've, we've been dealing with, I think, a number of challenges from various committees through COVID and before, and I expect they'll continue after. With membership issues and managing committees and managing interactions between committee members who may have opposing views on things. And council members who may have opposing views, committee members and so on. And, and, you know, looking through the committee handbook. Whenever one of these issues has come up. And then looking at how other organizations manu- manage similar kinds of issues, especially with, with people who are volunteering their time, but also in paid organizations where you're trying to create an environment in which people can be free to discuss their ideas. I, I think we, we updated our committee handbook to talk about you know, non-discrimination and non-harassment and things like that, I want to say a year and a half or two years ago now. And we, we put some language in place that is fairly good in terms of talking about what you should not do and what kinds of things are discouraged. But in looking over the last several years at other organizations that have been involved with tackling some of these similar issues. One thing that struck me in, in reading our handbook is that we, we frame everything as a sort of negative, what you should not do, what kinds of behaviors are unacceptable. Rather than including language in there about more, more positive things, encouraging everybody to take an open-minded approach to encourage discussion, to welcome comments from other people. And so this memo was, was really about just raising the question of whether we might want to go a little bit beyond what our current policies are in the committee handbook around committee membership and committee participation. To encourage rather than to prescribe. And rephrasing or adding to our existing policies to try and encourage more cordiality, more positive approach to the work that our committees do. And the, the work that our volunteers put into those committees. So I didn't really have a very concrete idea. I listed some examples from other organizations in my memo. I, I thought, you know, perhaps race and equity committee might be usefully involved. But it's also possible that it would make better sense to bring something more concrete to them. So maybe form a council subcommittee to essentially draft something and say, hey, you know, we think this is the kind of thing that we're looking for. And then perhaps bring it back to the council to update the committee handbook, or if it makes sense to, to refer it out to another committee to comment on. But to, to actually create something concrete first to, to work from. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or thoughts on this. Not sure what the right way to frame the discussion is, probably, I guess. The usual thing, which is if you have any questions for me, and then I'll open it to public comment, and then maybe we can go back to discussion. And I would include actually in, if you have any questions. Staff, since the memo is from me. Jeremy or Melvin I see is on the call also, if either of you have any thoughts or questions on this. I appreciate your involvement in the conversation also, because I think it's it, it involves all of us and you make, you guys have been involved in other organizations as well. You may have some, some thoughts or questions on this. So are there any questions first about my memo? No?
No questions for me.
Okay, I will go to public comment then. First hand I see up is David Cardinal.
Sure, first, I think it's a great idea. I totally encourage it. I do think that just making it part of a paper document isn't enough, based on my experience, at least leading teams. We, we probably need to do some kind of, I don't want to say team building or training or whatever for the committees. Just having a, if you want them to act a certain way, it's not enough, just hand them a written document saying you should behave better and be supportive. So I, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm more familiar with how this works in industry than how it works in government. But however we can do that, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of it and think we could benefit from it. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Is there any other public comment on this item? I see no more hands. Okay, saying none, I will bring it back to the council and managers, any discussion on this? Sarah.
Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's super important. And I agree that we, you know, could, could do a better job in this, this area. You know, I, I kind of have fresh eyes on the handbook in general, just being a new council member. And I, I think, you know, I know tonight we're talking about this in particular. But I think maybe down, down the line over the, the, the year ahead, there, there's other areas where we could have some fresh eyes on the handbook. And some changes, but as, as it relates to this, I think it's a great idea to do a, just a subcommittee of the council. It's, as you mentioned, there are a lot of best practices out there, and I think we should leverage that as an initial step. And so I would advocate for that, and I agree with the comments about it's not just putting it on paper. But I think we could do a better job of training, even I would say as a council member, when I came on, I wasn't really sure. You know, different, different committees, you know, they, they operate a little bit differently. And you know, what the liaison role is in each one and that kind of thing. So I think some, some training there is wise advice, so I would encourage that as well.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a very, very good thing to take a look at. And the idea of putting a more positive spin on things always, is always a, always a good idea. As far as Dave Cardinal's idea, I agree that getting some kind of active implementation makes sense. And maybe we could roll it into our yearly committee meeting with the committee chairs or something like that. Get in, get in a coordinator, facilitator to help out with it or something like that, just to, to make it a little more efficient. But yeah, I, I think it makes sense to look at that. And as Sarah said, probably take a look at more of the handbook as, as well as we go through the year. It's, it does come up occasionally and present some difficult choices for people and none of them very clearly cut or very easily, easily addressed. It's a good thing to take a look at.
Thanks. Yeah, I, 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 I think I agree with the comments that, that David made. I think that we, you know, should think about how to better train our committee members generally. I think there's another issue, which is not really the subject of this memo, that I think, Sarah, we've had a couple discussions about this. You and I in the past about, you know, better, better communicating between the committees and the council. Kind of the, you know, the work that we need them to do as directed by the council versus work originated from them. And understanding how, you know, how that balance works, because I think we've had some issues in the past where committees have wanted to work on something. And it's been difficult to kind of understand from the council precisely what that is and allocating staff time, if necessary, to support those activities. Versus the work that, you know, we're asking them to do and so on. So I, I think there's a sort of workload management piece and a workload coordination piece that I think would also be helpful to work on. But this is a, this is a little bit separate from that. I think it's more, a little more narrowly focused. Jeremy?
Thank you to the chair. One thing I would, would add is, you know, is, is issues become more complicated and controversial. I think it's important to ensure that there's smooth, smooth flow of communication from the council to committees. And, and, and as you described in your, your staff report, opportunities to ensure that it's the most positive experience for, for people to, to participate in. I, when we have new committee members come on board, I, I meet with them briefly just to talk about it. And, and I'm always delighted to hear the stories about what brought them to public volunteerism in, in Portola Valley. And, you know, I would say the vast majority of time people just want to serve. And we want to ensure that we're always honoring that through a really clearly defined process, where if there are any issues, they can, they can certainly deal with them. So, thank you.
I want to, sorry, I realized I, you know, I kind of got a little off course versus the real essence of the intent of, you know, your communication, Craig. And what I want to just underscore is, you know, I have been a volunteer in a variety of camp capacities over the last 20 years. And I feel very strongly that volunteering should be a positive experience and that people should feel good about what they're doing. And I think, you know, the what, the way that I look at your memo is really to assure that, to make sure, you know, we continue to get great volunteers. You know, we continue to get great volunteers and that they're having a positive experience and that they're feeling comfortable. To be able to share their points of view and respected. And so, you know, I, I feel like I got a little off on a tangent there with other handbook things. And so just wanted to bring it back that I. Wholeheartedly agree that we need to, to double down on exactly that as a first step and, and we can address other issues, I think, over the course of the year. So thank you again for bringing this up.
Okay, great. Sounds like we all are pretty much in agreement. So if we would like to form a. Council Subcommittee. I, I would volunteer to the, take the place of one of the two of them if they, if they were to want to decline as the author of the memo and, and having spent a little bit of time. Looking at some of these sources for, for where we might be able to find best practices and so on. So I, I would volunteer myself for, for such a subcommittee. And I, I don't know if either of you would want to do it, or if we do want to. Nominate one of the other two, appoint them, and then if they can't stand it, they can always complain and we'll replace them next week. What do you guys?
I'm happy. I'll say I'm happy to be a backup. I feel like with the housing element and wildfire committee, I'm feeling. Pretty busy, but I will be a backup if you need it.
I, I'm also happy to, to sort of take the lead as the lead member of the subcommittee and do most of the work and then just have a second. Second subcommittee member to say, hey, I just want to. Check with you that I'm not going off the deep end here. I, I don't think there's anything super controversial going to come out of this, but.
I'd be willing to be that person.
Okay. So do I have a motion then to form a subcommittee of John and myself to take this on?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to do exactly that.
Okay. All right, moved by Sarah, seconded by John. I guess we need a formal roll call because we're doing this by Zoom. Sharon?
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warnock.
Yes.
Mayor Hughes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And that's. Bring this then to, let's see, my agenda page. Item 11, council liaison committee regional agency reports, and we have no Mary Ann. Let's see things. So this should be quick and easy. Sarah, do you want to start?
Well, mine was long last week. I'll keep it short this week. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. Cultural Arts Committee, so I don't have an update there. I know what they're really focused on though is the PV Palooza. And anyhow, I apologize. I don't, I don't have an update there. The other one was the meeting we just had last night. For the Housing Element Committee, it was, you know, a, a big meeting, part one of two where we are reviewing. The various options for the arena allocation. The meeting started off with a really good presentation from Woodside Fire Protection District about their plans for fire mapping. I won't restate all that. I feel like Laura touched on, on all of that. And then we got into about a two to three hour discussion. About the constraints maps that took, took into account again, all the things that Laura just mentioned, slope evacuation routes. Seismic issues. And the like and. Reviewed a, a, a series of maps. That helped, helped kind of narrow down the field of where basically there, there is. You know, safe accessible opportunities for. You know, meeting the arena allocation. And so we reviewed all that, had some discussion amongst the committee with the community that was attending the meeting. Gave Laura and her team some feedback about the scenarios, kind of asked to expand what our options were both. Within the option areas and across town as well. And also had requested to see some potential visuals of. What this type of zoning might look like to give people a little bit more tangible sense of. You know, what something that is up to 20 units per acre might look like versus a townhouse versus a, a cluster of smaller units. And so we requested that and. She also will be bringing, so she'll be bringing those things plus the results of the housing element survey. To the next meeting, which is actually on Monday. So we're doing a back to back of these. Be, just to assure that kind of all this very intense content stays top of mind for everybody. And so part two of this discussion is on Monday. I encourage again, everybody to attend. And. I think that is it for the housing element. So. We had about 40 to 45 members of the public on that. So not as high as our last meeting. So hopefully. We'll get better participation on Monday.
Okay. John? John, mute.
Okay, so last night I had a conservation committee meeting and. Just, let's see, general discussion of upcoming proposal by MIG, which is a landscape and environmental firm. To review the frog pond for potentially. Pretend to clean up the harding grass and some other clean, cleanup over there, maintenance. The conservation committee is hoping that they can do some of the work and possibly reduce the overall. Hit from the. The amount of money necessary to, to pay this consultant. Let's see, they looked at Sequoia's trail maintenance issues. It talked about what that actually means in terms of. Coming back with some sort of proposal to. Address the. Pretty harsh fire safety work that was done over there and, and make it so that it comes back in a more sustainable manner. They're. Working on. Frog pond. Some discussion about open space committee, which is related work on the putting together. Standardized templates for a vision statement for each of the town owned parcels, the frog ponds, the spring down and I guess Dangler are the first ones on the list. And. Working on a, one, some wording for potential checklist for ADU ministerial review for conservation and that's a working process. And then there was a interesting find of a dead fox that was in perfect condition that is now being analyzed for potential. Poisoning by rodenticides by a local lab. So we will know something about that before. Too long, I guess, but the fox looked like it was in perfect shape. No evidence of being harmed at all, but it is very, very dead. And. Talked a little bit about PV donates. One suggestion was the possibility of. Getting the wildlife cam at Spring Down Pond going if there's maybe a need for additional infrastructure that might be covered by a PV donates. Donation. And that was it. That was the only one that I had.
Okay, thanks. Let's see, I had a trails committee meeting. The major item there, two things, one, they are planning to try and organize a horse fair this year. Being outdoors, it's likely that. What, whatever status or state COVID pandemic is in, they, they hope they'll be able to, you know, work something out where they can. Do something safely outdoors. So they're starting the process of figuring out when a good date might be and, and beginning work on that. And the other item is that the trails mapping subcommittee of the trails committee, they're re, they want to redo the trails maps and add some detail and. Bring a little more into the modern age rather than the, the trails map we have now, which looks like somebody sketched on the back of a napkin. It's a little bit bad than that, but. There are some areas where it's, it's a little deficient, I would say. So there, some committee is working very well on that and they. Gave an example of what they've been working on in the direction they've been going in to get feedback from the, the main committee. They did a couple of the trails in the Willowbrook area and showed how they've been kind of tracking on Google Maps and they dropped some pins in where they have questions and. Taking pictures of things where maybe it needs a sign or it might need an existing sign to be modified, those sorts of things. So they're. They're gathering a lot of information about all the trails, all in one place, consolidating it into Google Maps and. They're, they're going to come back to the main committee with some kind of. You know, templates of your, your 10 things that we've seen that are most common issues for, as we're going through the map. And then hopefully bring something back and have a. Finalized, updated official PV trails map. Sometime later this year. That was my only official committee meeting, but I have now also had three PV donuts meetings. Two of them in person on back patios and one virtual one by Zoom. And all three have been, I would say extremely successful. Everybody, as they were leaving the meetings, was talking about how. Helpful and lucitive they were, how much more they knew leaving the meeting than coming in, how much their mind had been set at ease. How they have a much better understanding of the timelines and town processes around housing and safety. There are other issues around building materials and. Budget issues and, you know, every issue you can think of in town that, that people have an opportunity to talk about and with these, these small group meetings. They've been, they've been running an hour and a half to two hours each, depending on how much wine availability there is from the hosts. And they've been, they've been great conversations. So I, I, I sort of deliberately was starting them slowly and not encouraging all of you to sign up as many as you can and not. Doing some amount of outreach to potential hosts to, to organize them. But the universal, universal feedback from them is, hey, can we do this again next month or next quarter or, oh, I know six other people who'd love to do one of these. So my, my guess is that the, the word is going to start getting out about it and we'll be. Having more opportunities to do it. I talked to Sarah today in our weekly meeting. About thinking about doing it in a more organized way and maybe. Helping make it easier to figure out, you know, which council member might be available at which time, if they're, if they're willing to do them. And setting up a Calendly or something to list all everybody's available times. And then if a host says. I don't care which council member, then they can just, you know, find an open slot on someone's calendar and it'll set it up. And if they prefer a specific council member, then they can also see that in Calendly. So. I think for the next stage of this, Sarah and I will try and set that up and figure out how it works with two. And then maybe if. Rest of the three others of you would like to join us, then we can add, add you into the Calendly as well. But they, they've been just fantastic. They were everything that I was hoping that they might be in terms of. Getting back to the kind of in person. Just sitting down and talking with your neighbors about what's going on and why, why things are working the way they are and what the issues are and. What people's concerns are and, and working through them in a, in a way that was really productive. So those have been great and I would. Highly recommend that you do all sign up for them. Once we figure out how to get Calendly to make it. Easy to manage. Okay, I guess we should do public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on? This item. I see Carolyn's hand has gone up. Carolyn, go ahead.
Very much. Yes, indeed. That's a. A very good idea, but we don't have your phone number. So I personally have sent you and Sarah an email and we did not get any response. So. We would love to meet with you guys. And I can set up a meeting with several people. So please reach out to us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Carolyn. I have your email and I'm sorry I haven't responded to it yet. I've been traveling for the last week, so I will, I will get back to you as soon as possible. Any other public comment on this item? Nope, none. I will move on then to the town manager report. Jeremy.
All right. Thank you very much. So I wanted to start with. That we reopen town hall to visitors and staff on Valentine's Day. On February 14th and. Very light traffic in town center with visitors, but we're so delighted to see folks again and see each other again after this latest spell with Omicron. Longer than I think anybody wanted, but having had a few scares with COVID on the staff. We think it, it certainly helped. The town council will be holding a special meeting on March 24th at 6:00 PM as a. Community update on wildfire adaptation and resiliency efforts. It will be. Moderated by the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center. We'll be sending out more information about that meeting as the structures developed in the coming days and week. There also is Sarah mentioned, some important housing element committee meeting on Monday, the 28th, and then. There will be two additional housing element update meetings. One at the council in a joint session with the planning commission on March 23rd. And there will be a community meeting similar to the ones we've held in the past, the week of March 14th. I think we're looking at that Wednesday, but more to come on the 16th. We have a new. Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Patrick Taylor. He succeeds, could not replace Andy Hui, who many of you know. We're delighted to see that Andy got a promotion within the sheriff's office and. Looking forward to working with Patrick. I've had a few great conversations with him. He started his career in part as a deputy in, in town. So he knows the community pretty well. As COVID loosens up a little bit more, fingers crossed, we plan to host one of our. Regular meet the sheriff's office staff, likely I would say late April, early May is what we're sort of looking at right now. That is my report tonight. That was quick and easy. Thank you.
Is there any, oh, Sarah, go ahead.
I don't think, did, did you mention anything about the schoolhouse?
No, I forgot that. I forgot two things on my list. Thank you, Sarah. We are looking to install the hardware related to hybrid meetings for the historic schoolhouse in mid-March, the week of March 14th. And our hope is that everything goes well and we test it out and it's working that, starting in April, we'll be back to having. Our regular meetings in that facility, depending again on COVID. So we're really excited about that. And the final thing, I forgot. The mayor asked me earlier if he could say anything about this, but I chose to say no, so I could say it. We wanted to announce tonight the retirement of Sharon Hamlin, our town clerk. She's been with the town 21 years and been clerk for most of that time. I promised that I wouldn't say anything more than thank you. About this. So I will simply say thank you, Sharon, for everything you're doing. We're in a recruitment for the town clerk position, which is closing. Next week. And we'll have more to report on how that goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also thank you, Sharon. And that's with a capital T and a capital U. Well, capital Y, I guess. I've been texting with my teenage kids too much. Okay, we'll go to public comment. I see three hands up. Carolyn's is the first. She may have left her hand up from the previous one, though. I don't know if it went down. Carolyn?
Yes, it was a mistake, but. I want to thank Sharon. We will miss her because she's one of the few. Real connections with the residents and part of the issues. Is that we're dealing with is the communication. But every time we sent it to Sharon. She makes sure that all committee members receive our emails. Unfortunately. You know, there's a big hiccup with communication and I'm, I'm very sad. Unfortunately, you know, there's a big hiccup with communication and I'm very sad to see her go. So you guys will be tasked because we're not, we love this community. And if you don't fix this communication error that is continuously happening in our town, we will get mad. It's not, you know, you have all the tools, you have all the money to do it. And still, after what, five years, it's not solved yet. So it's not okay. This, we count on this and this has to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. And next hand up is Rusty Day. Go ahead, Rusty.
Thank you, Craig. I certainly echo Carolyn's comments about Sharon. She's been and is just a wonderful, gracious interface for the town. And we are so fortunate to have her. She has always fulfilled her job with grace and impartiality. And we deeply appreciate that. She always follows up and has a friendly face for us. On the note, I just want to follow up on Rita Comas' question about the audit report. I followed Jeremy's link that he gave us. Thank you, Jeremy. And I went to the website and I noticed that the last audited report is for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. There are no audited reports for 220 or 221, which is, I think, what Rita was asking about. So I guess we would just renew the question, where are the audited financials for 2020 and 2021? Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand is Christie Corley.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Sharon for her interactions with the public. She's thorough and we will miss her. So I wanted to say that. And wishing you a happy retirement. I can't see you. I don't know if you're there. Oh, there she is. Oh, good. We have to see her pretty face. All right, we'll miss you. I do want to, wondering if Jeremy or I don't know if Laura's still on. We have an important meeting next Monday and the summary of the housing element. We have three locations that were described last night. And I'm wondering if you could describe those three locations more because I didn't hear it described for those that are at the meeting tonight and were not at the meeting last night. So I think it's important to get this into the minutes that the Nathhorse Triangle or the Portola Road and Alpine Road is being considered. And going around the corner from that park. This, the second one is the Delhi area. And then next to Parkside Grill, I call that a different area and the area of Westridge and Alpine Road. So can you describe that for the residents that are just tonight? And why those were chosen?
Thank you, Christie. Next hand I see up is Rita. Go ahead, Rita.
Yes, I want to say, as other people have said, Sharon, you have been such a joy to work with in the town for all these years and your follow-through and just kindness of even just adding these number of attendees during this time of COVID for us. It's been a huge, huge help. And when you, when you're all retired, if you want to come back to the town and go for a walk and I'll bring you some tea and your very own thermos or something, I would just love to. Because I know you're just too busy during the day while you're there to even make that kind of offer to you. But would love to do that. And, you know, so wish you good luck and hopefully, you know, lots of happiness in your, in your retirement. But I wanted to also follow up on the audit because Jeremy, I do see that it's only 2019. And I know by attending some of the finance committee meetings last year, and there was also talk in the town council meeting and talking about budgets and whatnot, I had asked that question. And there was talk about working with the auditors at that time. And it was about the same time that, you know, I was headed the audit committee at Hidden Villa. So I was very much in tune with waiting for that information and surprised that I cannot find it. So if there is someone that can send that information to me for the 2020 and the 2021 audit, that would be, that would be great. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but it is something that the town has talked about last year about getting done during that same time that I was working on the other audit. And I would really like to see that information. So thank you very much. And Sharon, I'm definitely on for that coffee, tea, whatever you want. I'll fix it up for you. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do. It's a true pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. David Cardinal. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, first of all, I echoed the thanks for Sharon, but I kind of wonder about some of the that we praise people when they're leaving, but I think it's important to remember what they're doing while they're here. And so I don't get that there can be so much criticism. I think the staff are people and if we think they're doing a good job, we need to tell them that while they're here, not just when they're leaving. So I'd like to see more balanced input or feedback or whatever. I think they take a lot of flack from residents who are, you know, are well-served by them. And so something a little more positive about them before the day they resign, I think, would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I see no more hands up from the public. Okay. That then brings us to the next item, which would be town council digest for February 10th. Or anything on that digest. No, then the town digest for February 17th. No, okay, I will go to public comment then on either of those digests. If there's any public comment on either of the two digests.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I had anticipated a member of the public coming tonight on one of the items on the on the digest, and I already read page 77. And I just wanted to give a little, little information about this and probably a few folks saw it on the forum as well. Concerns are related to the recent home hardening ordinance that the council passes, that urgency ordinance in December. And an opportunity to utilize certain materials that are not deemed non-composable, but do have considerable benefit above regular decking material. Excuse me, for decks. So this is something that we'll be taking a look at. We'll likely start with the wildfire preparedness committee and ask them to take a look at this. This is their product and it was their vetting process. So we'll talk to them about whether or not they want to see, at least in this case, materials that are great materials, but they don't meet a particular standard and non-combustible, whether or not we should include those in an update. So just wanted to mention that. That's why it was included tonight.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, sorry, I'm losing my agenda again. There we go. Okay, that concludes the open portion of this meeting. And I believe we are now adjourning to closed session for discussion with legal counsel about some anticipated litigation with significant exposure to litigation pursuant to section 54956.9B. So thank you to the members of the public who have been attending. Where if you don't leave, we will probably be booting you out soon so that we can go into closed session. But thank you for coming tonight.